Good evening. Thank you for being patient. We had a meeting right before this, so it took us a while to get resettled. This is the regular meeting of the Southfield City Council, April 17th, 6:00 PM in Council Chambers. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Council President Mandlone.
Present.
Council President Phil Stilwell here. Councilmember Banks?
Present.
Councilmember Brightwell?
Here.
Councilmember Pines?
Here.
Councilmember Frazier?
Here.
Councilmember Holt?
Here.
Do you have a question?
Thank you. Will you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have Communications. The Southfield City Council has established the following rules of procedure for all speakers. No speaker may make personal or impertinent attacks upon any officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected official that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected official performs his or her duties. No person shall use abusive or threatening language towards any individual when addressing the city council. Any person who violates this section shall be directed by the presiding officer to be orderly and silent. If a person addressing the council refuses to become silent when so directed, such person may be deemed by the presiding officer to have committed a breach of the peace by disrupting and impeding the orderly conduct of the public meeting of the city council, and may be ordered by the presiding officer to leave the meeting. If the person refuses to leave as directed, the presiding officer may direct any law enforcement officer who is present to escort the violator from the meeting. Each speaker will have three minutes. First speaker is Keith Harris.
My name is Keith Harris. Haven't been here in a while. First thing I'd like to say is I'd like to thank Joe Persons and Nancy Banks for doing their civil duty. You know, I love people who love this city like them, who stand up for what's right. Even though my day in court didn't work out the way I wanted it, I have to say so that my loss was the city's loss. We're not a violent city. We're not a violent city. I mean, I drive around this city, and I'm looking at new builds, Northland, new homes. What happens in a courtroom when they tell you you should have meant violence with violence? I should have, they say, you know, I'm listening to people tell me I should have just jumped on this woman on November the 8th. You know, that wouldn't have looked right, not for me or us. We gotta do a much better job. We gotta update our security at our schools. We gotta update our security cameras around this municipal building. Uh, you know, we can't wait for an Oxford to happen. That situation that day at Levy could have really turned bad. And I say again, who, I, I don't understand a lawyer saying that I should have meant violence with violence. Um, I can't argue about how the judge handled the case because she's the judge of that room, but I can argue one thing, that we, the people, are better people than what people think we are. We're better than that. We're better than, I got severely hurt out that deal, but do I wanna hurt somebody? No, I do not. But I do expect this council to learn from that because it will happen again. Do not let this individual embolden herself from getting away with this crime because she, she will. We got to make better laws to protect people at our voting polls, at our schools. We gotta update our system at Levy Middle School because the footage was absolutely terrible, but again, we must send a strong message to the new residents that's moving into our city that we're better than them. We don't meet violence with violence. That's what we got police officers for. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Stacy Jackson.
Stacy Jackson, Southfield resident and president of Beachwood Acres Homeowners Association. I did want to echo the sentiments of my husband. I am pleased that we have leaders in our community come forward and express their civic duty. And while I understand and accept, actually, the verdict and outcome of that, I'm also cognizant of unconscious bias. I understand that our society, when it comes down to black men being assaulted, acquittals don't actually mean the person is innocent. It means that there's an unconscious bias that black men are okay to be harmed, that unless it's something critical or brutal, that it's not really taken into consideration. Not under any circumstances is it warranted for someone to unconsentantly physically touch, hit, or strike another human being, period. The fact that this happened on election day at a polling location is also disturbing. The fact that that has pursued is something that this council and this city should take note of to prepare for, for future elections. Because when a person is allowed to get away with something, it's likely that it emboldens them to do more. The second thing I learned throughout this ordeal with my husband's injury is that the city must and has to do a better job with ADA compliance throughout our municipal buildings. I've watched tonight as a guest that's out in the audience had difficulty getting into the building with his walker because the wheelchair and handicap buttons didn't work. That's getting into our city hall. I also noticed that the ramp leading to the courthouse is far too way, too far away from the doors. And again, the automatic doors for handicap accessibility do not work. We're talking about our most vulnerable residents with disabilities and handicaps. We should make our buildings, if nothing else, accessible for them to gain access and entry to. We should be looking into repairs, updates, rather than renovating the pavilion to have something stylish to look at. Perhaps we should invest in widening then the stairs so that people on crutches and walkers can actually get up the stairs into our municipal buildings. At the very least, the automatic doors in every single city building should be operational and functional. It is critically hard for a person on a walker to open a door on a walker. That's unacceptable. The bare necessities of accessibility is a priority and should be a common dignity for our residents. So I caution and urge you all, one, pay attention to what's happening at our voting polls. Number two, it is critical that we act to provide the bare necessities of accessibility to our municipal buildings, to our residents. That is just unacceptable for our stairs to be crumbling where people can't gain access. It is absolutely unacceptable that automatic doors for our disabled citizens can't get entry to the municipal buildings.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Thank you.
But I did see our city, our deputy city administrator making notes about the automatic doors, so I'm sure he'll have those checked out first thing tomorrow.
Normally, we don't speak, but with respect to Mr. Harris, I totally commend you for holding your, your fire and becoming the gentleman that you were. I'm not familiar with all the details of your case, but the fact that you refused to get into a physical conflict, that's admirable, and I think it shows that the adult that you are and the man that you are. And with respect to Mrs. Harris, your comment, this is just, it's probably not public yet, but the city has started a hundred and sixty-five million dollar rehabilitation of all our, all our facilities. And all those things that you, you speak of right now, we, they are being looked at. We are currently hiring the general contractor, and hopefully it will, all this will get publicized. This is a 10 to 15 year project, is a hundred and sixty-five million dollars to rehab all the city properties. So those things will be taken care of, and some of them will be taken care of much sooner than others, but I just want to let you know that we are, we had individual consultants, architects, and whatever it needed to take, review all of our properties, and it came up to be a hundred and sixty-five million dollars to rehab it, to rehabilitate our whole campus, and it will be done over a period of time. Thank you. I just want to mention that.
Thank you. Next is Peter Osborne.
I'm Peter Osborne. My wife Cynthia and I have been residents and homeowners in Southfield since 1978. Maybe I'm five or 10 years late in making this presentation or asking for the exemption that I'm here to ask for. I'm 92, and we would like to be given consideration where the school taxes are concerned because we certainly are not privy or beneficiaries in this particular area because of our age and because of the fact that we have no children of school age. And that is something that I would hope that the city would take into consideration where the, the assessment for school taxes are concerned. In our case, as I said, we've been here since 1978. We continue to live and own a home in here in Southfield. So that's the reason for my petition here this evening, that some consideration should be given to exempt us from the school taxes.
Thank you. I know that there are certain programs available, not necessarily to exempt school taxes, but for taxes in general. I don't know if our deputy treasurer wants to speak about that. We also have our city assessor in the, in the back of the room as well, but do you want to?
Thank you, Keith, and our, and thank you for bringing it up. I appreciate the opportunity to discuss some of the things that are available. We do have there some programs that are available that will reduce or exempt taxes in general for people who have a financial hardship or who are veterans that are totally disabled. There are some deferments that are available for seniors and those type of things. School taxes in particular are not exempt based on whether or not you have school children in the system. The childless, as well as the child plenty, are all responsible because a good educational system in our community benefits everyone, whether it's your particular children or not. But I'm going to leave you my card, and also our assessor is in the back, and he'll stand up when you go back, and he'll be able to let you know what some of those exemptions and opportunities are for reduction in your taxes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next, we have presentations. We have a presentation of a joint proclamation, joint resolution for Arab American Heritage Month. Okay? Is there, do we have a representative from Lawrence Tech University here to accept the proclamation?
Sorry for putting you on the spot.
It's okay.
Thank you.
I'm Arab American, and I went to Lawrence Tech.
Perfect. Arab American Heritage Month, April 2023, a proclamation, joint resolution. Whereas the city of Southfield is honored to count Arab Americans among our population and is proud to recognize the contributions and heritage of Arab Americans in our city and throughout the nation. Whereas, for over a century, Arab Americans have been making valuable contributions to virtually every aspect of American society, including medicine, law, business, education, technology, government, military, service, and culture. And whereas such migrating to, I'm sorry, whereas since migrating to America, people of Arab descent have shared their rich culture and traditions with neighbors and friends, all of which have strengthened our republic while also serving as model citizens and public servants. And whereas Arab Americans have enriched our society by embodying the entrepreneurial spirit that makes our nation free and prosperous. And whereas the history of Arab Americans in the U.S. too often has been tainted, misconceptions, bigotry, and hatred, and issues such as civil rights, stereotyping, and bullying must be combated through education and awareness. And whereas, we must come together as Americans to build a peaceful, prosperous, diverse society where every individual is treated equally. And whereas, we join with our country and state to celebrate the Arab American community. Now, therefore, the mayor, council, and citizens of the city of Southfield of Michigan do hereby proclaim April 2023 as Arab American Heritage Month.
Thank you.
We have to vote on this.
Motion to accept the...
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we accept the proclamation as presented.
Support. It has been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Banks, to accept the presentation of proclamation for Arab American Heritage Month. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will present this to you. Thank you. Would you like to?
I don't have anything. Thank you very much. I appreciate it, yeah.
Next, we have a presentation from the, on the Business and Economic Development Department 2022 Annual Report.
Good evening, Council President, Honorable Board. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. As we have done for the past several years, we've prepared a report showcasing our accomplishments for last year and our goals for the year coming forward. We're calling this "Getting Back to Work" because it's wonderful to see people coming back to their offices, albeit not as much as we would like them to be, but they are coming back. The city of South, the Southfield Business Development, Oakland County, Michigan Works and Centropolis have strategically developed new and innovative services and alliances to set the stage for a strong 2023. We've targeted business retention and attraction programs by deploying comprehensive economic development strategies. Many call this economic gardening. We're encouraging and assisting the future diversification of the city's economic base in growing new and innovative industries and occupations. We're helping our residents gain a greater competitive edge for higher skilled and higher wage employment opportunities, and we're strengthening the city of Southfield by attracting new businesses. I'd like to thank the city council, the mayor, and our city administration for all their assistance and supporting me, as well as all my fellow department heads. We all work in a coordinated effort to assist projects in moving forward, especially assessing building, our DDA planning, of course, the police department, and then Oakland County, Michigan Works, Lawrence Tech, the Southfield Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, as well as our partners with the Chamber of Commerce. The first accomplishment, and I've broken it down into four categories, is targeting business retention and attraction by deploying economic development strategies, fostering growth of local business through the Evolution Lab. As we all know, the last several years, we started putting dollars towards Centropolis so that they can work with our micro businesses, and this has been a huge hit. The mission is to encourage the evolution of the underserved Southfield entrepreneur into a robust community through education and encouragement. When we first started, we just had people working kind of haphazardly with the staff. We've now pulled them together, and they've created a cohort, and these entrepreneurs are moving through a 12-week program. May 3rd, they'll be graduating and doing their final presentations, and they'll be doing a pitch competition again this year as part of Juneteenth. It'll be on June 14th, so we're really excited about that program. It says we have 13, but we have 16 companies that we've been working with, and they, the clients range between 30, and we have some older people that are participating. Nine of the owners are minority. Two are disabled, and they're really in a variety of industries: manufacturing, Industry 4.0, clean tech, automotive, hardware, consumer products, energy efficiency, transportation and logistics, and healthcare medical fields. So it really runs the gamut, and it's been really exciting to see all of these people working together. So if you're available to come to the pitch competition, we'll make sure that everyone's invited. It's open to the public, and that'll be on June 14th. Offering financial assistance when necessary. We know that the costs are out of control, and sometimes the city has to come in and help with these projects. We did three PA 210s, which is the Commercial Rehabilitation Projects, New Soul Gardens as they're renovating their restaurant, and Contour Companies, they purchased two apartment buildings, and all of these projects are moving forward, and they're looking very successful. And we did one PA 328, which is 100% abatement of personal property. This company relocated, and they are electrical components international. And then we have four Brownfield projects this year, two former schools that are being redeveloped, and then we assisted with some grant dollars to help with demolition of two of the projects. So it's been wonderful. Oh, and the SLT, the Holdings Market, the Asian market that is being built next door to the New Soul Gardens, and then our continuing effort with Northland Redevelopment. Oakland County, Michigan Works has been extremely successful in helping our families get back to work and find new careers. Lisa Strasky, who's the manager of Michigan Works, was very successful this year in helping six students become apprentices at Bausch. So our area really covers Farmington Hills and Southfield. This apprenticeships are a great way for young people to get a working education and get embedded into different companies, and obviously Bausch is an international company. So these students get excellent opportunities. They get to travel to Germany. It's a phenomenal way to set up their careers. We've also assisted with 54 applications for talent funds, and over $2.7 million were awarded to those 57, 54 companies. And you can see the other statistics. We've helped over 949 employers, and 538 new people were hired because of this. And you can see some of the wonderful people that we've been assisting this year. Obviously, we all know Mianna B., who's the hairdresser, and we were just thrilled by her accomplishments and how she was able to get through COVID and create a whole new career for herself with online tutorials. Hannah from Hummus Goodness, she's an incredible woman. Her and her partner opened a hummus facility, and now they're selling their product throughout the Midwest. To Quanta Brookings, she also, through the pandemic, created opportunities for underemployed people that were able to learn new skills and help sanitize buildings. The owner of New Soul Plaza, we've seen that beautiful rebirth. And then the Wellness Spa that opened off of Northwestern Highway. These are just some examples of small businesses that have been flourishing in our city. Another big effort is to just bring our companies back to work, and the Community Cup Challenge has really done a great job in that. This year, we had 14 companies participating in XPO Logistics, which is now called RPO. They've just been renamed, but they were the champions of the competition, and they were really tough, fierce competitors. So the city of Southfield has to up our game in the next competition, but we're ready. Anyway, it was a lot of fun. A lot of people came together, and they hadn't even met each other within each other's companies because many people are working remotely, and they just really didn't have opportunities. So these companies embraced our program and really enjoyed coming together and just, you know, all the camaraderie that we've had together. We have talked a little bit about Centropolis and the Evolution Lab, but they are so much more. They, they started out as a product development facility, and they continue to grow and create new opportunities to bring people to Southfield and to the state of Michigan. Their C3 Clean Tech, Climate Tech, and Circular Economy has been incredible. We've seen people relocate from California to take advantage of the expertise that's offered. The state of Michigan through Eagle is funding the Next Cycle Michigan, which is helping to support people with creative opportunities in recycling different products. And again, this is a statewide initiative. The Industry 4.0, that's again, people working with technology, and that's been phenomenal. And then some of the other resources. And you could see that all the money that's been pumping through the Centropolis, it's just really been incredible. And there are a lot of opportunities for city council and the public to attend some of their different competitions and showcases. So, you know, please feel free to come at any time to see those accomplishments. Again, Michigan Works, they continue to adjust with the need to do different things, and they've held 239 workshops this year and assisted over 1,670 people and over 1,021 employers last year. And then our training program, they've offered $600,000 to assist with people looking to find new jobs and to get certifications. So the jobs that they've been really focused on are the high-paying jobs of licensed practical nurses, project managers, truck drivers, medical assistants. Again, these programs are open to everybody, and we hope that people will take advantage of these resources. And our accomplishments have been, we've been, oh, I've been going around throughout the country and working with different site selectors to try and bring new businesses back to the area, and here's just a couple of examples. I'll be going to Select USA, which is a federal, to attract international companies back to the area, and we have a bunch of meetings set up, so we're excited about these different opportunities, but we're just really trying to showcase the city as best we can. Again, strategies for '23, stick with these same principles: business attraction, retention, diversification, educated workforce, and public-private partnerships. Business attraction, again, Lawrence Tech has added several new programs. There are health tech, med tech, and gaming, and so we're really teaming up with them to do attraction in those areas, and we're looking for people that are more likely to come into their offices because, again, as we talked about numerous times, there's a lot of available space, so we really need to do some direct attraction. And any effort that was talked about at the joint meeting regarding streamlining the approval process and making sure that we remain a redevelopment-ready community are really important to the city. Business retention, again, working with the Evolution Lab and really getting more resources out. Oakland County started a new program called Oakland Thrive. We have a wonderful woman that works with our small businesses. Her name is Tracy Williams. Her name is Tracy Williams. So we're really leveraging their opportunities, the state, and bringing all these resources together. And this young lady, Jessica Black, she created Berry Clean Soaps. Through her work with the Evolution Lab, she is now selling her product at Myers. And we're working with her and one of the other companies that we've supported, Reforma Group. And we'll be doing a procurement event for wellness and beauty products on October 24th at the Great Lakes Crossing. So we're excited about that programming and just sharing all the different micromakers that we have in the city. Again, trying to diversify our businesses. The work with L T U is really helping us branch out into different areas, including, again, the ones that I mentioned with health tech and med tech. And energy is a huge thing and just trying to attract more businesses into the area. And then, again, working with our schools. It's, it's been a little challenging and we kind of have ebbs and flows working with the school district and all of the schools. We really want to showcase the students, all these new jobs that are out there. Oakland County Michigan Works and the county and the several counties will be having a huge program in October where I think they're going to be inviting over 8,000 students, high school students, to come and see different career opportunities and career pathways. And so we're encouraging the city of Southfield to get as many students as we can out into those opportunities. And then the last is public-private partnerships. Just hosting different events, we're working on, we have an event on October, I mean, on April 26th to showcase, to help small businesses with cash flow, working with our chamber, and working with different organizations to, again, bring opportunities to the business community. That's my report. Thank you.
Any questions? Well, Shelley, thank you very much. I know that there's a, there's a lot, we see a lot of progress, especially with the Centropolis. And I know recently, I think it was Lisa, was on the news for helping a student get a job or an internship.
It's Sylvia, it was, yes. It was outstanding. Yeah.
So I think there's a, there's a lot that, that you're doing, especially behind the scenes, especially, as you mentioned, trying to fill in some of these vacant office buildings that we have, so.
Well, thank you very much. And if I can answer any questions offline, I'm happy to do that. And again, we hope that you can participate in some of our events. We'd love to have you attend.
Can, can you briefly touch on, are we still on for the reception act with L T U and Meta Policy Conference?
Absolutely. And of course, I'm not sure the date. It's June 2nd, I think is a Wednesday. The city of Southfield, the Southfield City Center and Lawrence Technological University are hosting a lunch reception as part of the Detroit Chambers Mackinac Policy Conference. It's really an effort to showcase to the businesses around the state, a lot of the large corporations attend this event. We want them to know that we're open for business, that we have a strong alliance with Lawrence Tech. And there's a lot of exciting things happening in our area. We will be showcasing the city center, DDA. We want to showcase all the great things that are happening around Northland, all the wonderful things that the city center advisory board has been doing, and obviously all the changes that Lawrence Tech has had. So, yes.
Councilman Fraser?
Yes. You talked about the new businesses that have started up in Southfield. The information that I have is that the first five years of a business is probably the real tough part because they have to attract people to come to their business or use whatever product they're making. Is there a possibility that new businesses that open up in Southfield could be identified and maybe on our Cable 15, talked about, you know, interviewed like the professional stations do with some businesses, they go send a reporter out to talk to them?
Sure.
And all, and, you know, if we have several, and I don't know how you, you make the selection, whether you throw everybody's name in a hat and pick somebody's name out and, and they're the one that's going to be featured for that period of time. But I think what we need to do, if we can, support new businesses to give them a, an opportunity to have their roots start to grow so that people will know where they're at and what their product is.
Absolutely. So we, we currently do do that and we work with Jim and Cable. And some, sometimes, and Jim has really great turnaround time on the videos. And so we do share that. Also Jasmine Patton at the Chamber, she's been really good at doing podcasts and creating little micro videos of businesses and sharing that out on people's websites and using the Chamber as another vehicle to get the word out. So, and then I also have a newsletter and we've been sharing business activities that way. So we are trying to do as much promotion of these companies as possible. And again, we're also trying to work with them. I know Parks and Recreation and Terry Fields' department has done a great job of creating different events for small businesses to gather together. And these kinds of businesses, we're trying to show them that there's all these ways to grow their business and stay so they don't get ahead of themselves. So this class that we're offering on April 26th, and it's a joint project with Lathrop Village and Oak Park, but the county's going to be doing a presentation on cash flow. So besides the promotion, we want to make sure that they have the internal controls to do their business properly. During the pandemic, a lot of businesses that had started were not built properly from the beginning. And a lot of the people and a lot of young women, they were starting their businesses with just their phone and they didn't have a computer and they didn't have quick books and they weren't doing things properly. And they weren't able to capture any of the grant money that came in. So they lost out on all that money because they weren't set up properly. So we want to work with them and make sure that they have the skills so that they can be successful over the five years and to help them grow. So yeah, we are doing that and sometimes it's just hard to get everyone out there. But if there is any business that wants, you know, to work with us, they're welcome to come to our events. So, you know, please help share these opportunities and give out my phone number, my email, you know, we definitely want to help work with all of the different businesses.
Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Next, we have four sets of minutes.
I moved at the minutes of the regular meeting, February 27th, 2023. The regular meeting minutes of March 13th, 2023. The regular meeting minutes of March 27th, 2023. And the regular meeting minutes of April 3rd, 2023, be approved as presented.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilwoman Taylor, to approve the meeting minutes of February 27th, March 13th, March 27th, and April 3rd. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have five items on our consent agenda. Does any item need to be pulled for discussion?
Yes, I would like to pull item D and E for discussion and clarification.
Would you, do you want them discussed now?
Well, you can, whatever you want, yeah, whatever you wish.
Mr. Ryan? Those are your items. The first one is the receipt of bids on, for irrigation services.
This is our yearly bids for irrigation services. It is for three one-year contracts. It was advertised by purchasing. We did receive three bidders. One was Mark Dutton, our current contractor. And the other one was Michigan Automatic Sprinklers. They're the ones who installed the sprinkler systems.
Patrick, Patrick, there's no need to go through, I just have one.
Oh, okay.
Little clarification. When it, in the repair services, it has rain sensors. So is that, is that what it, actually what it is? When it rains, it turns off the flow?
That's exactly what it is. It's to preserve, so we're not watering during a rainstorm.
Okay. Is that, does it work? I mean, because I've, I've driven by numerous cases where, you know, it's raining hard and short and hard and strong, but the...
Well, that's one of the reasons why we have a preseason inspection to make sure. And once this is agreed to, our representative is John Thompson, Parks and Recs, I believe Steve Griffin, will go out with the contractor and make sure that these things are functioning before it starts.
Okay. All right, then, well, the other item with, with the next item, which is the purchase of the camera tractor, it stated that we are buying, this will fall in 10-inch or lower, whereas everything else we purchased was 10 inches or larger.
Right.
That, two questions here. What is the, this might not be known, what is the proportion of our infrastructure that's 10% higher, 10% or greater and 10% lower?
Most of our sewers are well over 10%. This is...
I should say 10 inches.
Or 10 inches, thank you. However, when you get into some of the older areas, we do have things like six and eight-inch sewers. Previously, we weren't able to run a camera through. Now we'll be able to.
Okay. So, I, I know you weren't here, but was, was there a reason why we didn't buy 10-inch lower cameras because we got, that, that's part of our infrastructure, infrastructure? And it's been around for a while. Is there a reason we didn't buy 10-inch before? Oh, Lord.
Probably because a lot of manufacturers don't offer that. Once you get into the smaller sizes, it's usually more like a plumber would use than municipality. Because these trucks are used both in the water and sewer side. Normally, when you get to like a six-inch or four-inch or something like that, that's a private service. And so plumbers would take care of that. But we have found previously that, like I said, that we do have sewers that are that way. Plus, we do sometimes want to make sure that our pipeline isn't blocked by a resident sewer. So we actually go from the cleanout back to our pipe.
Okay. So this will be an ongoing part of our operations for these smaller pipes in the future?
Exactly.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thanks, Patrick.
No, no problem.
Any other questions, council?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
With respect to that, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda item as presented.
Support. It has been moved by Councilwoman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Fraser, to approve consent agenda items A through E. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have an ordinance to enact.
Chair?
Yes.
I move that we enact ordinance number 1768, the rental registration support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to enact ordinance number 1768 rental registration. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have agenda items for discussion and/or action. And our first item is to amend resolution 2023.82, the purchase of a generator for the Civic Center lift station. Is this Public Works? Will it help with the generator?
Yes. I come to you folks asking, once again, to have an amendment to reach recently approved purchasing. And that was because when we originally went out for bid for the generator, it was on a 30-day quote. The invoice was not, how do I put this on? Was not processed within the 30 days. And so when we went to purchase the generator, the quote had expired and they had told us now that we owe, in order to get the, it would cost us an additional $4,264. And even that quote now, because of the volatility of the market, is good until, let's see, May 1st. So we're asking purchasing to really light a fire under them to get this invoice processed.
Yes. You have a question?
Yeah. So Patrick, I know we, we try not to call anybody out. So, well, in the tone, it seemed like something, somebody failed or something failed, why that first, that first quote didn't get processed timely?
Again, Public Works processed it for plenty enough time. It actually came in like four days past the deadline. And I, I have, I can't say where the ball was dropped.
Okay, but it cost us almost $5,000.
Yes, it did.
So I think Councilman Brightwell has the same question, probably all of us have, is how will we make sure this doesn't happen again and cost more money?
I know Mr. Zornis discussed this with Mr. Michaels and is working on a strategy to make sure that this gets processed properly and that invoices are processed more timely in manner in general. It's a valid concern.
In also defense, is a lot of these contracts require the signature of the mayor and clerk. And this has been a bad time because they've been on vacation a lot or out of the office, so.
Okay. I know, I know this city's been around for quite a while. I know there's a way of expediting things, that that's just intuitive. And when somebody's out of town, somebody's always around who can sign for that person. So, John, is, is there anything we need to stress that, for the people that, that exist or in these positions that when it, when it comes to this kind of money that, you know, we can, we can expedite and not let anything sit in somebody's inbox until all the, the perfect scenarios in place?
And to be fair, that is probably not the case in this situation. You have to remember, we're not just talking about invoice, we're also talking about a contract that we have to review to make sure that legal decides, determines that it's legal for the city to sign that. So there's a lot of pieces that go into this puzzle. So I don't want to make it sound like somebody just received it and it sat in their box for 30 days. I know that wasn't the case. I was not involved in this, but that's just not how the system works.
Again, as I'll reiterate, these are strange times. Usually bids are, and quotes are for much longer than 30 days. And if you miss the 30 days, there's not a penalty. However, given these weird times, prices are soaring and what you quoted today and what you quoted tomorrow may be 10, 15, 20% difference.
Okay. Okay, then, well, it's, it's old, a boss I used to have, he, he drill one of these things. What you monitor is what you get. So can you just pass the word that we are monitoring these kind of things? Because for me, it, it's, it's a, it's a lost opportunity to save $5,000. We could go toward, you know, cleaning this carpet or something, you know, so. Okay. Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Banks?
And I, I trust that administration is going to look into this a little bit further, but we can't just rely on technology. And if they're narrowing the window like to 30 days, there's such a thing as put the paperwork in a folder. And if you have to walk from department to department to get a signature, there's always a deputy, if, you know, the department head is not available. That's why we have deputies and deputies should... And deputies should be able to sign off on a form. And I know at one time, the, you know, department head and deputies, there was always someone present. So we just can't rely on the computer systems when we're in a time crunch. And there's nothing wrong with taking a folder around to make sure everyone checks off on it. And I can say, I, while I will approve this request, I just don't want to see something like this happen again in the future. Following these meetings, someone should be apprised and the paperwork should start. And it shouldn't have to take 30 days to get the paperwork done. Someone is not either looking at their computer or doing their, doing their job period. So we just need to improve on that. And I trust administration will make sure this does not happen again. Thank you.
Council, any other questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I, I move that we approve this item, the amend, amended resolution number 203, 2023.8, the purchase of generator for the Civic Center lift station as presented.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Frazier, to amend resolution number 2023.82, the purchase of a generator for the Civic Center lift station as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Next, we have a presentation and discussion regarding a proposed conversion of an existing general office building to medical office.
Good evening. As you say, this is for discussion purposes only. Petitioners, Moishi Goldberg, property is located at 24275 Greenfield Road on the northwest corner of Greenfield and George Washington. Existing zoning is office service. And site plan review requests for the conversion of the existing 4,830 gross square foot general office building to medical office. Uh, this is a current condition, aerial, shows angled parking on one side of the driveway. Again, the site is zoned OS, office service. Master plan supports local mixed use. Current conditions, from George Washington looking north and from Greenfield Road looking west. This is the property located immediately to the west. That, um, you can see between the two driveways, there's some additional land that was a former alley that, um, will tie into the, the proposed development. So when, um, Mr. Goldberg first came to the planning commission for his intended use of medical office, he was deficient approximately nine parking spaces, which was, would have required a 40% waiver. Therefore, the planning commission at the time had recommended an unfavorable approval. Since that time, Mr. Goldberg and his architect have reworked the site, talked to the adjacent property owner about acquiring 10 feet so that they could provide additional parking. And, uh, this shows, uh, both angled parking and parallel parking. And really reducing, uh, a nine parking space waiver down to within an accessible 1 to 2 waiver or 10% of what was totally required. This is a map showing where existing urgent care facilities are located within Southfield and in particular, this greater area. The star indicates where the subject site would like to install a medical office or urgent care. And, um, with that, I'll let Mr. Goldberg and his architect further describe what they'd like to do. Uh, this is an adaptive reuse of an existing underutilized general office building. With that, Mr. Goldberg?
Thank you, Terry. Good evening. Thank you. A few months ago, we noticed a dumpster, there was a CPA on the corner of the block that I lived on for the last 40 years. I grew up in that neighborhood. And, um, he was moving out and this building was unkempt. And, uh, we asked on the neigh, you know, the neighborhood if we should, who wants to get it? If someone wants to use it for something? And, uh, the consensus was, we should get it and turn it into a doctor's office. Urgent care is simply a generic term. It's more like a doctor's office that people could walk in, get swabs, tested if necessary. We have a very close-knit, walkable community and that, that's in the epicenter. So I bought the building and obviously the parking was deficient. We were hoping initially when we went to planning that the walkability would, and the community desire, we got signatures from all the neighbors that by and large were interested in this. And, um, ultimately, it didn't pass planning because of deficiency. So we, uh, one of the neighbors offered to sell 10, 10 feet so we could get, add parking that would be within range, would be deficient two spots, which would bring us within regular percentages to get a waiver. It's not, there, the, I called it urgent care just because it's a medical. We want, we would like a local doctor, a communal doc, someone from within the community to open a practice. Not like a big, um, corporate branch from one of these big urgent care companies. It's literally a communal practice. And then we would have open hours that people could walk in and get swabs, et cetera, a convenience for the community. That's, that's what we're here for and that's what we want to know about.
I'm sorry, can you just give your address for the record?
Yes, Moisha Goldberg, 15618 George Washington, Southfield, Michigan, 48075.
Thank you.
If, if I could, before council asks questions and comments, so under the original proposal, it was deficient. We couldn't in good conscience recommend favorably. This revision is here tonight for discussion to see if there's a consensus that if, if they were to acquire the additional property and to rezone the portion, the 10-feet buffer of the former alley, that, um, there, there's a favorable chance it could pass council. If that's the case, then Mr. Goldberg would have to go back to planning commission. We'd have to re-advertise for the lot combination rezoning. And then it would come back to council sometime in the near future. But tonight is to give comments on the viability of, of what's being proposed with the additional parking.
Yes, Councilman Banks?
So I'm hearing, um, two words, urgent care, and then I'm hearing doctor's office. So is this going to be a doctor's office or an urgent care?
Hi, my name is Mohammed. I'm the architect on the project. I want to speak really quick to the term urgent care, because I've been having a lot of trouble lately in different cities, just because of that, the term urgent care. People view it as if almost it's going to be an emergency center or something.
Can you just give your address for the record, please?
I'm sorry, my address is, uh, 235 South Roseveer, Dearborn, Michigan, 48124.
Thank you.
The urgent care, basically, I, I've designed maybe 30 of them or so. Um, I've been designing them all throughout the area. And they're, basically, it's a general practitioner that just opens a little bit later and takes in walk-in patients. That's really the only difference. A lot of times, it's a difference in the medical billing aspect of it. And so just the term urgent care has been off-putting to some people in, in some cities and townships because they feel like it's going to bring in an excessive amount of patients. But just from what I've seen, there, it's not too many additional patients to what would be at a general practitioner. And a lot of the places that I do design are general practitioner offices with urgent care, with the means also to be an urgent care, which means they can get some walk-in patients. And they generally just open a little bit later and open on weekends. That's kind of the, that's kind of the difference, yeah.
So will you have the words displayed urgent care out there?
It's a good question. I, perhaps, yeah, he says yes. I don't, I don't know, really. It will be dependent on, on the, I have no real reason, one way or the other. That's just how we thought about it, because that's how it's universally thought of currently.
And I guess the reason I'm asking is it's just, you know, to the planner. I'm just noticing there's a lot, a lot of urgent care locations, all of a sudden, popping up in Southfield. Every time it seems like I go down another corner, there's another urgent care. And it seems like at one point or another, someone's not going to survive because there's so many. I don't have a problem for the use that you are proposing, but, I mean, do we have to put urgent care on that building?
Well, through the chair, I, I've tried to do some research on service areas of urgent cares. I do know that, um, in the medical field, they're seven times less expensive than an emergency room for minor items. And you get in and out a lot quicker. That's why we've seen a lot of them pop up. Many of the hospitals are behind the urgent cares as well as independents because they do provide a more convenient and more cost-effective medical care to people that need something above and beyond scheduling an appointment in a general medical office on a certain day. So there is that need. How many do we need and what the service radius is? I haven't been able to find anything definitive on that yet. It's similar to like a drugstore has typically a one-to-two mile radius. I would imagine that the urgent cares are similar. Not all urgent cares accept the same insurance. In this particular case, Mr. Goldberg, um, has some support from the neighborhood because, uh, it's a more walkable neighborhood, so they want to provide this additional service. Either way, whether they call it an urgent care or a medical office, we factor parking based on number of exam rooms and other employees. So the term, whether they're open from 9 to 5 Monday through Friday or, uh, Saturday and Sunday with some extended hours, the parking would still be calculated the same based on the number of doctors, exam rooms, and so forth.
Thank you.
Terry, can you go back to the slide showing the other locations? We knew this question was going to come up. So I know that our city assessor worked with planning and GIS.
So this, this is, this is where Mr. Goldberg is proposing. And you can see there are two additional urgent cares on Southfield Road within a mile, linear mile, and then another one just to the north. But then the rest of the area, um, pretty extended, extended out.
Hey, Ari, um, I just explained that neighborhood, there's a, within those other urgent cares a little further down Greenfield, um, south, are not part of, they're outside of the bounds of this, of the little community that we have within Southfield and Oak Park. There's the, the walkable community that I was referring to. That area is very, where I'm, where, where, I, the peg that you have right next to the star, I'm not sure if it's an act of urgent care, is that on? There's one place there that says urgent care that's been closed for many years. So it's only the one further past 9 Mile or closer to 9 Mile.
You said it's closed, the one to the south?
The one right below the star. I don't, I don't know what, unless there's...
It's based on our assessing records.
Was that the, then they have been...
Next to La Vinche.
Animal hospital?
I think so.
But again, we just, this, we didn't look at actual buildings that were, we, we did it based on what the assessing records had in the, in the title and what it was registered as.
Yeah, okay, but I'm saying that specifically, this is more of a, not of a, how do I say it? A corporate structure. This is a communal, the neighborhood would like a doctor to come in and service the neighborhood, very. And, and, and we read the building for that purpose. I updated it and it was dilapidated and everyone's happy in the neighborhood. That's, sorry, we look at it as a positive thing.
Councilman Brightwell?
Terry, um, could you, could you give me the salient difference between being zoned for general office and zoned for medical? I intuitively understand what it is, but can you tell me if I go into the orders and read this? What, what was the distinction, thank you?
Well, um, first of all, both are permitted uses within the OS district. So whether you're a general office, you're an accountant, a lawyer, typically, they require four parking spaces per thousand square feet. The doctors, a doctor's office, medical office, is going to have higher requirements because typically, you might have two, three, um, exam rooms per doctor. So you have two or three people waiting to see the doctor, plus additional patients in the waiting room and larger staff. So those require more parking than what would be required if it was just a general office where you could have an accountant with an administrative assistant. It's going to take a lot less space, a lot less parking space than if you use the exact same space for medical office. So those are, really the differences is the parking. But they're both permitted uses in the office service district. Now, this is an older building. It doesn't meet, um, some of the current setbacks. But as we're trying to do is, we have a lot of vacancy or underutilized older office buildings. We're trying to find an adaptive reuse that doesn't have a negative impact on the neighborhood. So there's always a concern if you don't have enough parking, is there going to be people parking on the side streets? But since this is more of a walkable neighborhood with more, uh, Orthodox Jewish community that would tend to walk versus drive, and there was a survey that, uh, the neighborhood supported, not 100%, that this is a niche that Mr. Goldberg is trying to fill as a need in this particular neighborhood that might be different in a different part of the city.
Okay, okay, so obviously, the, the, I want to say entrepreneur, you're taking, they have taken under consideration the business risk that's, that's, that's in place, given these other locations scattered around the city? The other urgent care places that are scattered around the city?
People would like one here, the neighborhood would like one at this location, if possible, yeah. So the parking was a real limitation and we think we could overcome it with this, by extending the property, these 10 feet, and adding parking on the left side of the drive as well.
I mentioned a term like business risk? You know, that's, that's the risk of going out of business and not achieving your economic goal. So I assume you're taking that under consideration?
Of course.
Given all the other locations that provide the same service?
So not, not all them provide it, like a community, a doctor, physician, that are pediatrician, that the, that the community is comfortable using. We would like to bring a pediatrician wherever one would like to use from the community and put them there. You know, it's not like a doctor, people drive to the doctors and this is something that people would like. So we did calculate the business, the business risks.
Okay. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Frazier?
Yes. Excuse me, but I don't, I don't understand how, uh, in detail, how the urgent care works. If a person comes into urgent care, and the thought popped into my mind when, when you talked about, uh, hospitals, emergency rooms are overcrowded some of the time. If someone comes into urgent care and whatever illness brought them in or injury is beyond the help at urgent care, you, are you associated with a hospital or prefer a hospital to tell the patient to go there and so that the hospital can maybe speed it up for them? Or, or is it just, you take your chances after you get to leave?
I know, and I, when you call a regular doctor's office and they tell you if it's an emergency, you know, hang up and call 911, so I would assume the same, you know, leave that to people's discretion or a doctor would advise them or do whatever they could to help the person. I don't, I don't have a perfect answer to that question. I don't know.
Okay, well, typically, I, I don't go to, I have not gone to an urgent, uh, urgent care. I've gone, if I was sick and I thought I was sick enough, I'd go directly to the emergency room and take my chances there. But since you're going to be in a walkable, you're opening this office in an area where primarily walkable, uh, community, you'd have to go home and get your car, you know, if they walked in. So, or they had to go someplace else. And that's why, just wondered if you would be associated with a hospital so they would know that, uh, this really been more...
This would not be associated with the hospital.
Okay.
As, you know, I know Beaumont has a line of urgent cares that, and, you know, but this, this is not associated with it. This is an independent doctor's office.
Okay. All right, thank you.
If, if I could, through the chair, I've used them many times, my children, my grandchildren. If you have a weekend ear infection or a sore throat or you have aching bones, something that was not life-threatening, instead of waiting till Monday or Tuesday to get into the doctors, you can go after 5 o'clock. Many of these are open till 9, 10 p.m. They're open on weekends. And if you ever try to schedule a doctor's appointment nowadays, I'm, you're usually weeks out before they'll even see you. So this does provide, uh, service to the community that doesn't require you to go to an emergency room. You're going to be a low priority because it's not life-threatening. You're going to be a low priority because it's not life-threatening and spend a lot more money. Again, it's how, what, what's the appropriate amount? But if there's support and they're willing to take that business risk competing against others along Southfield Road, that's their decision to make. We're just here to make sure it's in compliance with our ordinance.
Right, Councilman Hope?
As someone who has 31 years in the healthcare industry where I negotiate provider contracts, urgent care centers are a positive if they work. The issue is how do you get the patients to come? Because you will have some that says, no matter what is wrong with me, I'm going to go to the ER because I have coverage. But we as a health plan, we want them to go to your urgent care center because at the hospital, we have to pay for all the surgeons who are there just in case. We have to pay all the overhead just in case. So urgent care from a sense of the health plan for sure is a positive. However, to be successful and where I always have the problem negotiating the contracts is until we can get the employer groups to say, you're going to put a penalty to say, to stay out of the ER, because a lot of people use the ER as their doctor's appointments too. But you got to be able, how do you drive that care to the, to your urgent care center? So when it works, it's great for all of us involved in the healthcare industry, the payers, the patients and the employer groups as well. But the key is getting the patients to see, to come there. The appointments are better, yes, you get right in as our planners said, but again, how are you going to get the patients to come with us as well? One of the things is you're going to have to be associated with the health plans. Because unless you get with us, they may not be able to come and see you. So that's going to be key. And I'm just looking at the building, I hate, because for me, I'm going to go, I see the neighborhood, that's, that's possible, but those who can drive will go where it's good and all that. So it is a good thing when it works. That's all I'm trying to say.
Just to the councilman, to your point, the building doesn't look like that anymore. That's, we bought it, we, it's being redone, there's new awnings, there's new, everything looks better about it, it looks nice now, and that's why we're doing it.
And I'm thinking with the development that's coming at Northland, it might, might be a good thing walking, I mean, I don't know how far that is, I can't picture where that is.
This is just south of Ten Mile.
Okay, not far, but it can work, is what I'm saying, so that's all, thank you.
But to your point, this will act, because it's a communal thing and there's a doctor that you know, that will actually bring them in. So your point is understood.
Yes, thank you.
Councilman Taylor?
Just a question. This is more of a community, doctors, but if you put urgent care, anybody driving down Greenfield will stop there if they have an emergency. Are you prepared for others outside of that walking community?
Of course.
Okay. And then with that being said, I don't know if you want to put urgent care, and since you're, you don't seem to be stuck on the words anyway. Urgent care is really maybe community emergency or something, I don't know, emergency medical? I don't know, but if you put urgent care, you're going to attract more, I mean, there's a lot of baseball games and things going on and people may, things happen. I know I've seen a lot of people just pull into an urgent care because they can, and if you accept the insurance that that person has, that's taking care of right at the front desk. But you have to be prepared for the people that'll walk up, but as well as the people that might drive up. And as long as you're prepared for everybody, I think that-
I would like, we would like the operator should be well-versed and prepared to serve anybody.
Okay, okay.
So I think, I want to try to bridge the gap, I think there's, there's some confusion here. So I happen to live a couple blocks away from this neighborhood and a few people actually approached me, Mr. Goldberg was not one of them, about starting an urgent care in the neighborhood. And I guess this is the first one that's come through the planning department though. But when, when Mr. Goldberg is talking about a walkable community, I think most of it is generally because it's heavily populated with Orthodox Jews who generally don't walk on, on Saturday. That being said, that's why this, if there's a, if there's a place they can walk versus drive to an ER versus an urgent care, this would be preferable, but he'd be open to everyone. So his, the need, I would say the need is there because within that one and a half square miles, you have probably close to 250 to 300 families, if you want to extend just across Greenfield into Oak Park, it'd probably double that, of families that don't walk. So when he talks about a walkable community, I believe, he can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe he's talking about people who don't necessarily walk on the Saturdays and Jewish holidays. But he'd be open to anybody who wants to use their insurance, pay cash, things like that. Is that-
Correct. And we all say another point, addition to Saturday, just because there's a lot of children, people would love to send their 15-year-old, you know, down the block to get, or with an older sibling or, you know, to walk, there's a walkability advantage during the week as well.
Can I make a quick comment?
Quick comment, so the, we revised the plan in order to provide the sufficient amount of parking if this was not in a walkable community. So we were just, we're making sure that we did provide the proper amount of parking in order to alleviate any concerns about parking becoming a problem. And so the deficiency of one or two spots, if this wasn't a walkable community would still mean that we've provided, you know, plenty of parking and we shouldn't have any overflow onto the streets. But then given that it's in a walkable community, I don't think problem should be any type, I don't think parking should be any type of problem for the facility.
Okay.
And to the planner, they're not asking for rezoning, this is a, this is a special use?
No, if, excuse me, if they move forward, because they're requiring 10 feet, that was a former alley, it was zoned residential. So they'd be coming back for like a vehicular parking for that buffer strip so that nothing could be built on it. They'd have to do a lot combination and then they would also have a site plan. So if there's enough heads consensus that yes, this could move forward if you do A, B and C, then we'll, we'll have to re-advertise and bring them back to the planning commission for the rezoning, lot combination, and you'll see the site plan again. If they went forward with what was originally proposed, there's two grade of variance needed for parking. We'd have to recommend it now, hopefully you would too, because they wouldn't be able to accommodate drive up or drive in patrons. So the site would be deficient. But this at least, if, if it's palpable, at least for council, they might want to then go through those processes and come back in two or three months with the rezoning request and the site plan.
For the rezoning, is there enough acreage to, for that rezoning?
When, when we consider vehicular parking, that's when we could consider less than an acre because it provides a buffer between the commercial use and a residential use. That's the only one zoning district where we've accepted less than an acre because it's an accessory to the principal parcel.
But everything else would stay the same, masonry wall?
The OS would stay the same. And because, because there was a former alley there, it does not make the existing single-family home non-conforming, it still would be conforming.
Okay. Councilman Brightwell?
Yeah, has this building been renovated? I think I passed by here, there's something been changed, it's different.
It looks nicer than before, yes, I fixed it up.
Excuse me?
Yes, I fixed it up.
Yes, I, this one, I know, I see this building, I passed by there.
It's still in the middle, but, yeah.
Excuse me?
It's still in the process, but we're getting it better and better.
Okay, all right.
Councilman Hope?
I just had a quick question. The blacktop to the right, that's not part of your project?
No.
What is that next to that?
It's an office building next door, it's another-
That's just their park.
Yeah.
And through the chair to Councilman Hope, we did investigate if there was any additional parking that they could lease, but they're, they're within one parking space of what they need for their own use. So that wasn't a viable option. But we did look at the two commercial properties on the north and south to see if they could work out some lease agreement to lease a few spaces. But that's not, it's not practical.
And I'll say the only thing that bothers me about this building, it's not, it's not the petitioner, it's just the way the building is, because there's, there's a couple of them, I think in Greenfield, they're 13, is that you see the, you see how close, the sidewalk is basically next to the street. But that's how they built buildings back then, I guess.
And your interest is in the back?
Yeah, the interest, I will, I will remind the council president that he grew up actually on the block over and I grew up the block, and there used to be the grass in front of the building. And they extended Greenfield when we were young, I remember watching it, and they cut out the grass in front of the building. And then Ron Miller ensured that it would be safe by putting up the, those, those guardrails so we wouldn't have that safety issue.
Council, any, any other questions? I guess is there consensus for council? Do we feel comfortable if the petitioner is able to get the alleyway lot combination to move forward?
Yeah.
Yes, I feel comfortable with it.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Okay, next we have a authorization to award a contract to OHM advisors for a professional design and engineering services for the south side of Nine Mile for a shared use pathway from Evergreen West to northbound Northwestern Service Drive.
Yes, I'll be taking this item, but we do have a representative from OHM here if you have any specific questions. This is the continuation of our Nine Mile corridor. As I had mentioned previously, we're, we're part of a consortium of communities to try to link I-75 to I-275 that includes Hazel Park, Ferndale, Oak Park, the city of Southfield, Farmington and Farmington Hills. This particular stretch of property from Evergreen East to pass the mixing bowl as indicated here, currently does not have any sidewalks or virtually no sidewalks at all. It's just goat path, as I've used the term before. How this fits into the bigger picture, if you look up at the screen, the properties, the lines that are showing solid green are all off-road, non-motorized pathway that are installed eight to 10 feet. So this is part of the civic city center trail that goes from Loser all the way down Northwestern Highway to Cornell and then across to the Magnolia Center and with the eventual linkage of Northland's one and a half mile perimeter road. Last year, council had authorized the completion of one half mile of new pathway adjacent to Baveric Woods Park. We are in the design engineering phases of continuing that from Prescott to Loser. Ms. Lee Schultz had come to you last month that we believe we're going to be successful in a TAP grant. That will provide 80 cents on the dollar for this half-mile pathway, plus a little bit on the north side that links with previous work that has been done. That includes a road diet which would extend the curb into the pathway, reduce one lane and create additional 10 feet of green space. So the next phase is looking at design engineering from Evergreen East to the Northwestern Highway connection and then further across the bridge where the mixing bowl of highways happens. Since we received a $350,000 earmark from Senator Moss, that freed up additional metro fund dollars that council had previously approved that's in our planning department budget, we would like permission to move forward with the design engineering for this next mile and a quarter so that should grant dollars become available, we have preliminary design engineering in place, we're shovel-ready and we know what the cost estimates are so that we can leverage the dollars that we have to continue our pathway. That's the gist of it, is to authorize approval of OHM's contract to do design engineering from Evergreen East to Northwestern Highway and then preliminary design engineering of Phase Two. We have a representative from OHM if you have any specific questions. The money is available in our current budget and I'd, with council's permission, like to get them engaged during this fiscal year so that we can be ready for potential projects in 2024.
Councilman Brightwell?
Yeah, Terry, I, I don't have a problem with this. And I talked to Austin earlier today, so you currently have the money, these are not 2023 metro fund money.
These, these are, these are money in fiscal year 23 that you previously approved-
Right.
-for us to expend. We got a windfall with the state earmark that helped pay almost half of what the money was going to go for towards the pathway. So this frees up some additional money so we can do some design engineering and be prepared to take advantage of future grants should they become available or to at least identify and prioritize how we can spend most economically future metro funds.
Okay.
We currently receive about a quarter million dollars a year in the metro fund and the last I looked, there's about $900,000 in there, some of which you've already allocated towards the TAP grant. But what's nice about the TAP grant is the city is receiving 80 cents on the dollar for construction projects from the federal government. We only have to prepare a match of 20% plus engineering fees.
Right.
So we freed up some money, it's currently in our budget, we'd like you to designate some of that towards this design engineering.
Okay, I'm going to ask a very layman, you know, question, and this will probably get to OHM too. What is the engineering challenge to this and what is the benefit to the citizens of the city of Southfield?
Well, at least for, from Evergreen to the Northwestern Highway, it's pretty level. We have to do some surveying, identify trees, but it, one, makes the immediate neighborhood safer place to walk, it's more socially beneficial because you don't have to expend money on cars, better access to public transit because there is a public route currently on Nine Mile. Anybody that's waiting for the bus right now has to walk on, on grass or over obstacles, it's not accessible and it's not safe. And then it ties in with the larger goal of linking Nine Mile as a regional greenway corridor that provides additional access to regional trails, including the Joe Louis Greenway and the I-275 Metro Park Trail system that links up, really connects hundreds of miles of existing trails. So there's the immediate benefit for the neighbors, workforce, students that traverse Nine Mile either in the road or not on an accessible route that access public transit. And then long-term, we have the benefit of the corridor. Now Phase Two is where current bridge is located and a not, a very unhit spot, unwelcoming pedestrian sidewalk system that doesn't meet ADA because of the grade, it's up against the guardrails. That part's a little more challenging and that's where OHM is just proposing preliminary engineering to decide what is feasible to cross that bridge. Because currently it's not very pedestrian-friendly and it's, it's unsafe in many circumstances.
Okay, okay, I'm glad you, you brought the, that was my next question. Let's say once you get to the bridge, I know from a engineering standpoint, bridges are, are, you know, a little tough, you have another engineering school on that. So would we be, are you able to maybe get some federal funds or additional state funds?
Yeah, possibly. The good news is there's a center turn lane on the bridge that's really not being used because there's nothing to turn into. There's no property adjacent to the bridge. So talking to the engineer by using jersey barriers, we feel that we can gain enough area on the bridge itself to create a safe, bikeable, walkable connection that doesn't have the grade challenges that are currently the sidewalk has. But in order for them to give us more definitive answers, they have to study that a little more. And I don't know- And I don't know, Zach, do you want to add anything else regarding the bridge itself?
Oh, yeah, sure. If you did, would you introduce yourself? Absolutely. Hello, everybody. My name's Zach Hampton. I work for OHM Advisors, uh, down in our Detroit office. Um, Terry did a great job explaining anything. I don't really have too much to add. Uh, the one thing I would like to add is, yes, there's two bridges there we have to cross. There's MDOT jurisdiction we have to deal with. So a lot of what we have to do here is vet the solutions that we would come up with, with MDOT, and ensure that they would be amenable to those solutions. Um, but Terry did point out the one we were considering right off the bat with, uh, getting rid of the center turn lane and, uh, taking that space, uh, with, up with the pathway.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Hope, do you have a question?
Yeah. I'm trying, you, you calling it a bridge. You're talking like right there where the old IBM building, that, where IBM was?
Well, it's just prior to where the old IBM building. If, if you're going east or west on Nine Mile, you're actually crossing over both the Southfield Freeway and M10 Lodge. So those are sunken below. So there's, there's a span between Northwestern Highway Service Drive and the old IBM building that's actually, uh, uh, an elevated bridge. It's at grade level for us, but it's, it's elevated over, you can see all these, the mixing bowl of freeways. Here's the M10 Lodge, here's the Southfield Freeway, and all the different interchange on-ramps and off-ramps here. So this, this span here is, is mostly bridge. And i- if you've ever walked it or tried to bike it, it's not very pedestrian-friendly. And, and as short as it is, it's probably the most challenging piece that we have in our entire six linear miles of Nine Mile, because if we can figure out how to crack this nut, it just makes a continuing pathway linking, um, you know, both borders, Greenfield to Inkster. And currently, we have plans to bring you down and around and up and over, but the shortest point between, shortest distance between two points is a straight line, and most people don't want to go out of their way, even though that's the safer alternative. So if we can figure this out, and I think there, there's probably potential for grant dollars because of MDOT and SEMCOG for, for solving this, not, especially if we built this pathway on both sides of it, and all they have to do is make this short connection.
And that was going to be my next question. Is the pathway on both sides or just?
Well, it'll be on the south side of the, of Nine Mile, but it'll be on both sides of this bridge.
Yeah.
And there's sidewalk on the north side already.
There is, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, any other questions? Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes.
We do have a recommended resolution for your consideration.
I move that we authorize the mayor and the city clerk to sign contracts in the amount of $136,000 with OHM for professional design and engineering services for this pathway project.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilman Hope, supported by Councilman Brightwell, to approve the contract total amount of $136,000 with OHM Advisors for professional design and engineering services for this shared pathway as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counsel, I will now turn it over to you. We'll start with Councilman Hope.
Oh, no.
Councilman Brightwell?
I have nothing.
Councilman Taylor?
Uh, nothing this evening.
Councilman Banks?
Um, I have nothing this evening either. Thank you.
Councilman Frazier?
Uh, yeah, in the, uh, it seems to be a continuing problem, and it is the amount of, um, people that are being, guns are being used to shoot people and kill people. And, um, I just want to tell everyone that, you know, there's always an opportunity to talk to each other, to resolve an issue without pulling out a gun and shooting, because it injures both families. That, um, a lot of innocent people are mostly involved in, are a lot of times involved in this. Um, and just over the weekend, it was just terrible what was happening. And, um, I don't have any problem with people having a gun, so don't say that I'm against the Constitution, but use your head. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, just two, um, announcements. The first is that on April 22nd, uh, the, we will be having a Household Hazardous Waste Day from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Rosok, located on Eight Mile and Maple Ridge Avenue, for all those who need to, uh, take advantage of that. And then also, on Sunday, this Sunday, there will be a Touch a Truck event here, um, on the campus from 1:00 to 4:00 PM. They're going to have a whole bunch of different types of trucks, um, police cars, fire trucks. Public Works will have all of their big trucks and machines out there. There also will be a, um, sensitive for sounds and sirens hour from 1:00 to 2:00. I don't know if it, it will be at the same location, but for those who have a sensitivity to lights and sounds, um, there will be a special hour for, for those individuals. You can check out the city's website for more information. Uh, I also want to thank our tech services for our new backdrop. Um, I thought that just the Windows logo was not help, you know, was, was not that inviting, so they're going to be switching off different pictures of the city, um, in our background when we have the, the screen down, so thank you to them for making that look, um, for making the city look a little nicer. And certainly, um, last but not least, uh, happy birthday to our council president, Proten.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
It was on Friday, so.
Thank you, thank you.
And with that, we, our, our mayor is not here this evening. Um, next up, we have city administration.
Fifteen grant requests, and our Congresswoman Rashida Talib submitted one for us, which is part of the Nine Mile Recreation, including Beechwoods. It's a $3.5 million grant application. This is not noticed that the application has been approved or anything like that, but it is noticed that this was one of the ones selected by our Congresswoman for submission. So part of the future money that Mr. Crowe had mentioned, this could well be one of those sources. We're just requesting that it be accepted and placed on file, and of course, we will keep council updated as to what occurs with this.
Counsel, any questions on this item? Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we receive and file the community funding grant fiscal year 2024.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilman Taylor, supported by Councilman Hope, to receive and file the community funding grant for fiscal year of 24 as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. And we are asking for action on the second item, however. It concerns the Michigan Inn owned by Shafa LLC. As you're aware, there was a bankruptcy proceeding requesting Chapter 11, which is protection and restructuring. The city of Southfield opposed that, advocated for its Chapter 7, which is liquidation. The bankruptcy judge, Judge Thomas Tucker, determined that the bankruptcy application for Chapter 11 was not in good faith, granted our request that it be converted to a Chapter 7. There was no sale of the property, as was reported in the cranes. So now, we are being requested to budget $250,000 to secure the property, and to some degree clean it up, at least to the point where it's safer. This could include, could include fencing, covering the windows, cleaning out the first floor, and security protection. This is being requested from fund balance, which is funds on hand, not otherwise budgeted. So this was not budgeted this year. It was not anticipated. This is $250,000. Of course, we can't guarantee we will get this back when the property is sold, but that is the likely outcome. And I think the other important point to consider is that regardless, this is in our city. It is our problem, in addition to the property owners. So that's why we are requesting for council to approve us to take this responsible action to secure the building and prevent something tragic from happening.
Councilman Brightwell?
Sure. Was there a definable reason why the judge wanted us to do this? Why, why couldn't Shafa do this, uh, themselves? I mean, you know, a couple of expenses?
I think because it's a bankruptcy, sir. I mean, that's the idea. They don't have the funds allegedly.
So the, but, I, I'm just saying, I know, I know it's bankruptcy, but people who go to bankruptcy, they're different. Uh, you, they, so the judge determined that this firm are not capable of, they, they don't have the money to do this? That, that's what you're telling me?
I, I believe that was part of the basis for why this was rejected as a Chapter 11, which is continued operation with debtor protection, and the judge determined that just wasn't viable. So Chapter 7 liquidation is the viable, but the liquidation can't occur immediately, so unfortunately, there is not an immediate funding source to do this.
Okay, okay. I, I understood. I'm just-
I understand.
Saying that, that a lot of bankruptcy firms have money, and I've, I've seen bankruptcy cases. They have, they have money. Uh, and that, but anyway, okay, that's, that's good. They, that's what the court says, and so that's what we're going to do.
Alright, sir.
Alright, Councilman Frazier?
Yes, just a question on the, the sale. If the, does the current owner have first rights on the sale? So that's why we're not, we're concerned that we're not going to get our whole $250,000 back? Or, I don't know how it works.
In bankruptcy, it's, it's, the owners use the last one to get anything out of a bankruptcy. So I, the point is, I just can't guarantee that this is safe expenditure. I can't. No one can. I believe it is. I know we are scheduled to be one of the first repaid from this, but I also know there are taxes. I also know there are water bills outstanding, and I don't know what the value of the building will eventually be.
Okay, so they only get what's left over, if there is anything left over?
Their last in line.
Okay.
Counsel, any other, any other questions? Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move that we approve the Michigan Inn Shafa LLC administration expense as presented here tonight.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilman Taylor, supported by Councilman Frazier, to approve the Michigan Inn Shafa LLC administration expense as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Madam Attorney?
Yes, good evening. I have nothing further to add. Thank you.
Madam City Clerk?
I just wanted to acknowledge the, uh, council's, um, recognition of Arab American Heritage Month and share some nerd facts with you. Um, one of the, one of the, the first recorded Arab-American persons who come in was an enslaved Moroccan, um, Arab-American who came in through Florida in 1527. And, um, they have been, of course, a big part of our American history, um, and one of the, uh, notable, uh, persons, um, was Private Nathan Badim, a Syrian immigrant who fought and gave his life for the American Revolution. And also, more recently, Ambassador Philip Habib, uh, under former Secretary of State for Political Affairs, who played a prominent role in the Vietnam Peace Talks, um, resulting in the 1973 Paris Peace Accords. And so, I'll share that with everybody. Um, he brought about a ceasefire in Lebanon, which is a notable thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, um, I just, I wanted to issue a correction. I was told that the wonderful pictures that will be switched behind us was also with IT, was done in conjunction between IT and community relations. So thank you to both those departments. Um, also, just as a, a housekeeping note with, for council, we are looking at potentially having a retreat with a focus on diversity training for the council. I've been talking with our DEI manager and HR, and we are looking at having two half-day sessions focused on diversity. I wanted to throw out some dates and see if they work for everyone. Um, we're looking at a Thursday and a Friday, um, June 8th or 9th, or, actually, both those days. It'd be two half-days, just because I think one day would probably be too long. Would anyone have any problems with any of those dates?
Hey, it'll be a half-day, you said? Start it whatever.
Let me pull up, because we're, it's based on trainer availability. Give me one second.
Those dates are fine with me. Thank you.
Um, I believe that Thursday, June 8th would be at, would be an afternoon session, and then Friday, June 9th would be a morning session.
So far, both folks.
They work for me.
I'm fine.
Okay. We do have to just make sure that we can, we have trainers available on those, those days. Um, we will probably mix in a little bit of business too, but the main focus will be on diversity, and it will be actually, uh, an outside training firm, I believe, that will be working, doing, uh, working the session with us. So once we are able to nail down that date, if that works, I, we will come back and schedule the appropriate meetings at a future meeting.
Is it going to be just diversity training, or is it going to be inclusion, or is it going to cover the whole?
It will be, cover everything.
Okay.
I was told. But, um, but yeah, diversity, inclusion, equity, and there are specific items that, that will be touched on that, um, cultural competency, things like that-
Okay.
-to help council, um, keep moving forward.
Seeing that, sure.
Harder, easier said than done.
Looking forward to it.
So, once, once we have those dates, we'll, we'll confirm with council.
Thank you.
Alright. Is there anything else to come before the council?
I'll just say for those dates, the sooner the better before calendars go up.
Right, um.
Because mine's-
We were, we were holding them right now, so we just wanted to get, make sure council was okay, so, but I agree. The other dates were the days that we have council meetings in the evening, and I think that may be too long for us.
Thank you.
Alright, seeing nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.